It's working.
All right.
Okay.
Now it has changed host.
It's just like, let it go. Hopefully you can figure out how to get it to me. Okay, we're gonna get started. I want to thank everybody for coming and thank especially Lee Householder, who is the executive director or president, I'm not sure which is your title, Lee.
Director's fun.
And has been there for a pretty long time. And Noah Dalby, who is an AmeriCorps volunteer who is working with the Manufactured Home Coalition.
Oh.
Of Virginia. And so I don't know which of you would like to go first. This is very informal. So you know, both of you are going to be talking about manufactured homes, mobile home parks. And but I don't know.
I can, I'll start it out. Good then I think.
And you can say a little bit about project homes too.
Noah can help us on the kind of the larger, bigger picture.
Yeah.
I think it'll work that way unless you.
Okay, sure. Yep.
All right. Well, thank you. I was looking forward to seeing everybody and being part of this. So and I've just celebrated my 15th year. So yeah.
Oh, right.
And Project Homes, we do kind of four things. One is owner occupied home repair through federal and private volunteer programs are really well known for building wheelchair ramps with volunteers. We also build and own affordable housing, both apartments and single family homes. And then we have a energy conservation program, which is very robust and serves over 30 localities in Virginia. We have about 50 employees, a $20 million overall operating budget. And we also have now embarked upon a mobile home and manufactured housing repair and replacement initiative. So I was going to share screen and go over.
Wow, okay.
Highlight. That working?
Yeah.
I got two screens. So if you see me going sideways because I can see you on one and. All right. So and I'm going to focus on a park, a mobile home park called Bermuda Estates and talk a lot about manufactured housing along the way. And then Noah will be talking kind of more about regional issues and challenges around and policy issues that we can look to in the future. How long do you think you want me to talk Dallas? I was going to set a timer.
Oh, um, I, you know, we've got an hour. So we, you know.
So I'll talk and I encourage, I think some of this might beg questions. So.
Yes.
Feel free to ask as we go, but but no more than a half hour than gives no.
Yeah, that's great. Yeah.
All right. So the art, this is where our journey began around mobile homes. And this was about a decade ago. This is a park known as the Rudd Trailer Park. And this park was targeted by the city of Richmond code enforcement. And in some ways, for good reason, the concern was the units were unstable. Whether they could even hold snow in the winter, there was occasional reports of fire. So in code officials tend to be worried about unsafe dwellings. But but they went about going into this park in a very troubling way where they they brought the police and they went to each unit and cited units. And they struck fear into a community of people that were mostly Latina and Spanish speaking. So this caused quite a stir in the community because there was a threat of people leaving their houses and the knowledge around mobile homes was limited. And I got involved because we have a home repair program. And I got a call that a coalition was forming to talk about what was happening at this park to help protect residents. And it was a big aha moment for me because in I had been in affordable housing for at least a decade prior to that. And we weren't really talking about mobile homes. I we I was a part of the world that was like trailer parks and the stigma attached to to this. And so this began a whole journey for me and for Project Homes. And what happened with Rudd is we attempted to start fixing units to bring them into code implied compliance. We started raising money, but we had an uncooperative owner. And we refused to repair units where if unless he signed an agreement that he wasn't going to raise rent. And then instead, we worked with Catholic charities and we found new places for people to live. So that spurred a concern that we we weren't prepared as a community and that Project Homes could maybe step up in this direction. So we, this is a slight, a little bit of a timeline of our journey that we started raising funds and we started learning more about manufactured housing. We were part of a few studies that were we sponsored and basically to explain the difference between a single wide trailer, a double wide trailer, a modular home and what manufactured housing really is. And then because of the gap in our community, and this is the organization that I'm on the board and Noah is in a sense, working for is the Manufactured Housing Community Coalition of Virginia. So we created an entity to build knowledge statewide. And then along that journey, a lot of impetus was put on projects on learning more about the condition of units in our region and how parks are run. And that was sort of our role. And so we, we have a board of directors and this is a big shift. So we went on a journey of shifting our focus strategically to add manufactured housing to something that we do and and looking at what we thought was an opportunity to fix units, replace units and buy a mobile home park. So I had to convince my board. Not didn't take much, but show them that why we were going down this path. And then there was a pretty major grant opportunity, a $500,000 grant competition by the Robbins Foundation. And we thought, and it was an innovation competition. And Robbins is known for mostly childhood initiatives. But we were a finalist and we had to do quite a bit of work to prepare ourselves and start thinking. So we started getting our arms around what is it we really want to do? And we we were like, we want to buy a park and we want to innovate the construction of manufactured housing. And that got every, everyone got excited and we got galvanized, but then we lost. Because in the end, Robbins is a is a child focused foundation. And even though this was the innovative winner, it wasn't aligned with their objectives. But because we went through the process of doing that, it really helped us think through where we wanted to go. So we made a plan. And we set our sights on buying a mobile home park because we wanted to introduce a new form of, we wanted to introduce a new unit in a mobile home park that sought to de-stigmatize that and run a park with a better approach, meaning a more empathetic and caring approach to residents. So we came up with a vision. And when COVID hit, we had some time on our hands and we actually purchased a park that I'm going to talk about. So I'm going to show you a lot more pictures. So Bermuda Estates is located in Chesterfield in Chester, right near Route 10 and where Route 1 intersect. It is 50 units and this is a basic layout of the park. It is home to 50 families, 200 individuals, almost 80% are Spanish speaking from a variety of mix probably places in Mexico and countries in Central America. And 30% of the people who live, 36% are actually children. So it's a very largely Spanish speaking community. And this is what we set out to make an initial vision to repair units, make improvements to the park through the infrastructure to introduce a new home and to engage the community and to revamp the management approach. So that is the different pieces that I'd like to talk about. This is what happens. This is the kind of things you run into in mobile home parks, which I don't know. Noah hopefully will talk to the amount of we have in our region. But we have over 3,000 mobile home units in the central Virginia. And people living in mobile homes are as many as people living in public housing. And we talked a lot about public housing. We don't talk a lot about this unit and a lot of times these were built in the seventies with when with low code expectations and never meant to be. One, never really meant to be mobile. And number two, really not meant to still be up today. And but they are a low barrier entry place for someone to buy an affordable house. You can find them sometimes on Craigslist for $3,000. And you typically own your building and then pay rent on the lot. And and that's the model that is perpetuated across our country. And but very uncaring toward the person. There's no responsibility to the park owner for the unit on the thing. So we've started, we've learned a lot and these units were in pretty bad condition. So we immediately set out to do things like address the code violations that existed, repave the the main road through the park, put in speed bumps, put in parking, do a turnaround. So a school bus can now come in, improve the lighting. And then we had a, and then we started a community engagement process to learn from people that live there about some of their concerns. And I'll talk a little bit about that. So this is some, there's actually this building is a, I don't know if you can see my cursor or not, but this in the corner, left corner is a kind of a maintenance shed. And we're excited that we recently began a process of turning that into a community resource building. And just in the last 30 days, the school bus now comes into the park. And children in the park do not have to stand on Route 1, six lanes across at this location at eight o'clock in the morning and at four o'clock in the afternoon. So. But but this, this was one of the most worst units in the park and get a feel for some of the challenges, the, you know, their paper thin walls, they're not very structurally, not much structural integrity, horrible electric. Oh, it's not moving. All right, I'm gonna, I'm worried about this. So hold on, I'm going to pull up a PDF version really quick.
I had a question also. When you said you, we had, you said we have three, was it 3,000 mobile home units in in central Virginia? I didn't know if you meant Project Homes or whether you meant the.
We meaning our community, not Project Homes. Central Virginia is home to. All right, can you see that?
I can throw some exact numbers out here also. So we did a a report in 2016 and central Virginia has 13,200 total mobile home and manufactured homes in the central Virginia area. But 4,932 of them are located in 66 parks. So there are people living in communities and then there are people who live in their individual units and stuff. So there's a little bit, little bit of a difference there. Yeah.
Right. Okay. Good. Thank you.
I was trying to monitor. I think that's what threw me off. I just want to make sure you can see my pictures now. Is that? Yes.
Okay.
So this was.
Yes, we can see him.
Here's our timeline. This was the Rudd picture and then I was I was right here talking about the different things and then showing this being the condition of units in the park. And this was some of our improvements and this was the particular unit that shows some of the main many challenges. So there was a woman living with her two grown mentally disabled children. And we were like, this is not a livable situation. So she became our first replacement candidate that we set aside, set out to do and but really difficult conditions in this unit. And then we set to remove the unit from the park and and then went on a journey to learn more about manufactured housing and some of our challenges in the park itself. The zoning requires a home to be a single wide trailer. You can't do any other form of construction. There's no foundation homes allowed. It has to be basically that's HUD code versus local code. And the HUD code has some standard issues to it. So so we realized that we think we're, we, we started dividing our thoughts. How do we innovate in construction and how do we engage this and improve this community? So I'm going to talk a little bit about our construction journey. We actually went and visited, I did not, but our staff went to nine different manufacturing facilities between North Carolina, Virginia and Pennsylvania. And learned a lot about the manufactured housing industry, the costs, the processes, the quality, the flexibility and inflexibility of building these units in factories. And we came away thinking that the industry's got some limits that we're concerned about. You, they control materials and timelines because they're in a manufacturing process and no, no desire to customize design for manufacturing efficiency, not necessarily livability. Get it out of the building fast and get it on the ground somewhere. They actually don't come with AC. And in even in the last four years, the cost of these units has almost doubled in price. So when we started our journey, we could buy a unit for 39 and now it's 69 and that's pretty modest, but brand new. So we found a manufacturer in Pennsylvania that was willing to do some conversions. And we introduced a new unit into Bermuda Estates, one which is a model currently and one was a replacement for Bonnie, whose unit I showed you and her two sons. And then we use this as a way to engage the community, invite them in and to start sharing our vision with people who live in the park about replacing the homes over time with a higher quality unit. So this, I'll show you some more pictures of this as we go. But the fundamental learnings that we've learned that we want is number one, you need to keep these, these units dry. Most buildings don't have gutters or eaves that are manufactured even off the assembly line. So need to get, give the water a place to move and go and keep it from like pooling under the unit and then make them more look like a house present at the street, right? Even though this could be a bedroom entrance and you live for the side, let's put the facade. So we have an opportunity for aesthetics. Energy conservation, we actually condition the space under the unit. This helps keep moisture away and helps with energy efficiency from not fighting against heat and cold through duct systems.
Is that Zach?
It is Zach coming out from underneath. And it's, it's amazing when you see it because it looks warm. Right now it feels warm and dry. And then the last, and this is a biggie is most of these homes are like campers and nothing standardized. So we went, we kind of forced this manufacturer to put standard windows, door widths, kitchen cabinets, things that we all could go to Lowe's and change out. But if you live in a manufactured home now, you need to go to like a specialty place or a salvage yard for replacements. So we had these fundamental learnings and we incorporate them in this house. And then this manufacturer said, we're now we're doing it again. You know, we have no, there's no need or there's too much demand for our other product and you guys can take a hike. Because and then we paid a lot, you know, over 80,000 to get this custom. And then we had to retrofit it when we got it. So that spurred a whole nother initiative. So where we are today and we partnered, I have, I gotta say, we have tons of partners that help us with funding. Virginia Housing used to be called VHDA. Virginia Tech has been working with us. We've had most foundations you can think of in this community have a contribution and corporate partners who believe in what we're trying to do. And so we've set out to design a new unit that we're going to build ourself. Because we can't find anyone else to build it. And we want to incorporate the things I've talked about and and then introduce this, which has caused a slowdown, but because we made a shift in our approach. And then we were able to engage the community and get feedback. There is some simplicity to what I call kind of, this is a manufactured home, but a single wide trailer is probably what the cultural norm is. It's just a 14 by 70 rectangle. So there's only so much you can do with design. But the concept is to get the middle to be as open and feel as big as possible. But these rooms are very small and humble, but the construction quality is high, the energy efficiency is high and longevity and hopeful lack of depreciation. So because we have to build them now, we took a new approach and now we're building this building next door to our current building, which will be our manufacturing facility. So we will have the ability to build two units at a time. Now, this isn't like a production line. This is a warehouse where we're going to build mobile homes and inside. And we have to get a HUD certification so that when it walks, when the building comes out the door, it has a stamp and it can go anywhere in Virginia. But our intention is to do replacements in our park. And then we are raising money tangentially so that each unit would be subsidized at a sales price of between 25 and 35 to the existing residents. 25 and 20, 35,000. So that means they can borrow at 20 year money and be all in for between seven and $900 with their lot rent in there. Payment on their house, which is possible to affordable rent in our region.
It's super affordable.
So that's, we are in the permitting process for this manufacturing facility. We hope to build our first two units by this time next year. And then I would just want to tell a little story about the community and then I'll one of the great things, this is Bonnie and her new unit with her son. When we make investment in community, people were felt so threatened by the previous ownership. They're also not willing to make their own investments. So by us making an investment, people started fixing things themselves and make and we're going to stay, we're not, not, we're not going to be kicked out. So that, that was a nice opportunity that we didn't anticipate, but has happened. And then we now, because there's so many Spanish speakers, we actually have a part time Spanish speaking community liaison who goes in, we did everything from one on one meetings to engagement events and listening sessions. And now we coordinate resources, everything from scholarships to ESL classes to homework programs to pet spay and neutering. And then we help them with their understanding of leases and financial literacy as well through all these other partners in our community that do those things. And we realized we bought a property that was a strong community of people with children and just like any other community in our region, you know, they help each other. And we're going through a process which we've been well educated by experts in the field about how to do this intentionally and incrementally. So we build trust over time and looking to build leadership of people who live there by involving them in conversations, showing them that we are a good partner and then supporting people that live there. And one of the biggest ways is through Spanish speaking liaison. We rewrote every lease in Spanish. We help interpret all the time back and forth. And so that's been very powerful. We've got information on our designs. This is some folks from tech with Zach and Marion. And then one of the big takeaways is that that kind of beat up community building at the beginning would be a great community center. So we're converting that to a resource center with a playground and an office and a multi-purpose space. And we just started construction last week on this building, which will be a fantastic resource for the community. So our journey has been on manufactured housing has been to focus on a community, use it as a pilot place for us to both learn and then show off to our region and get, try and fight back the stigmatization of mobile homes. Also represent a underserved community, which is largely Spanish speaking individuals who live in mobile home parks. And then tangentially launch a manufactured housing process that involves replacement of units and improving our expertise and in repair. So it's been quite a journey since the day that I got a call about Rudd and what the challenges were to know, we're very happy to be where we are, but we have a lot of work to do. And our bright vision at Bermuda is provide residents with a high quality replacement unit that doesn't depreciate and maybe even has a wealth building opportunity, or at least doesn't work against their resources and have sustained resource communication coordination, which we found to be essential in an underserved community. And then we'd like to be a national model for Equale Park ownership that would, you know, maybe be a paradigm shift to encourage others to do the same in our community. So that was the stuff I wanted to talk about and.
Well, I am so impressed by what you've done. I mean, it's really pretty amazing.
It is. And and when did you start with Rudd? How long has this process been now?
It's been, it hasn't been quite a decade, but it's been eight and a half years.
Amazing. Really.
Not even ever to thinking about it.
So just a couple of questions about, so in Bermuda Estates do on currently, everybody owns their unit, but they're in bad shape. Most of them, is that right?
Yeah. Yes, when we bought the park, there's one or two that were on a lease purchase arrangement. Very not wasn't equitable thing. So we immediately just said relieve them of the debt and said, you can have the unit.
Right, right. And and you're, you actually own the land.
We do.
And you're, you charge rent so that you can cash flow.
Yeah. So we charge a brand is about 465 per year.
Wow, that's pretty low.
And and even in our three years of ownership, we have cash flow each year.
Okay, cool.
One of the challenges in this is they do cash flow. So they're very attractive to investors. So there's a, we, it's very high barriers to entry in park ownership.
So it's hard to get one that will sell to you.
Absolutely.
Any other quick questions before we hear from Noah?
Um, yeah, just a couple. We, I'm curious, having worked for a company that owned, who worked with investors on those MHCs, the horrible big companies, um, we, I have a little bit of information, just enough to ask some questions. I know that the, that the, the trailers are usually considered chattel and not, so you wouldn't get a mortgage. You would get a different type of loan on those and there are specific loan companies that handle those type of loans. Are the houses that you're talking about building, those are still chattel because they're movable, correct?
Currently, yes.
Okay. And do you have a loan company that you're working with, with these people or you? Okay, and do you have a loan company that you're working with, with these people or are you guys, are you guys loaning the money to them and then collecting?
We have partnered with Habitat for Humanity up in Virginia. So there are, they are in a position to be our le- the lender.
Wonderful.
Oh, wonderful.
We are also, I mean, I don't know if Noah, but the coalition is also advocating for. You know, part of this whole work is where we also need to change and this chattel issue is a big one. We. Over time, maybe we could put these on a permanent foundation of sorts or. But we'd, so yes, but that, they're titled at the DMV.
Yes. I did remember that, um, and I knew there was some big issues with the chattel loans and that too. How about the residence credit? How is that working for you guys? Are they, is it, since it's through Habitat for Humanity, is that not really, are they able to build credit, I guess? Under this or how does that work?
Uh, you know, we haven't gotten far enough down the road to totally answer that. I can say generally. Uh, it's a heavy cash group. They're not very banked and. Uh, you know, there are just different. Not everyone's, most people have a work visa, but not necessarily a citizen.
Right, right.
Issues around that, so part of our journey is that.
Right.
That financial and that's part of the Habitat partnership.
Yeah, um, yeah, that's.
But uh, overall. We've. Were actually pleasantly surprised by the incomes of the residents who live there, like they're a resilient. Group, we haven't had, we've only had two units with rent issues in the three years. And each of those were circumstantial, like sickness or job.
Right, right.
Not perpetual.
Yeah, I'm not surprised at that at all, um. Yeah, that's, um. Okay, so, so your goal is to go in that direction, not go for the, the used pipeline market on the, on the mobile homes, is you wanna stick with the?
Uh, mostly because we're trying, this is a pilot, we are throwing a lot of. Eggs in this basket.
Okay.
If we were to own multiple parks, we would open ourselves up to a much more diverse array of opportunities. Uh, and we've considered that and are not against it, but we've raised an expectation of this unit with people. We have thirty-five people on the list and they're patiently waiting and. Uh, we think that's probably the best, but in the meantime, if the critical need developed, we would easily go replacement rent. Uh, used unit to be better than something that had fallen down.
Right, right.
So we're open to that.
Okay, right, awesome, thank you.
Okay, um, thank you, Kim, uh, good, really good questions. Uh, Noah, why don't you take it away and give us information, including. Um, uh, any uh, bills that might be in the General Assembly. That will help what everybody's doing with manufactured homes.
Gotcha, um, so yeah, I can kind of speak to some of these. I'm gonna speak to sort of like the coalition's history a little bit, as well as I can go back and talk about some of these structural conditions. We're talking about here, which all these residents are facing, um. I, off the top of my head, I don't know exactly what, um. Christie, who is our president and she works for V P L C. Um, she's currently in the General Assembly right now, uh, pushing for a specific. A bunch of different specific housing legislation, including some stuff uh, related to manufactured homes. Um, I believe, I believe she's working on. Just sort of like increasing uh, the, like the limits or like the timeframe, basically, people need to be notified or uh.
Yeah, I think that's right.
And stuff like that. Again, I don't know off the top of my head.
That's fine, I forgot to ask you about that before, so don't worry about that.
Just no worry. Yeah, um, anyways, so. Hello, my name's Noah, um, I'm uh, the AmeriCorps Vista member at the Manufactured Home Community Coalition in Virginia. Uh, AKA the M H C C B, it's a, it's a big name, uh, I just go by the acronym. Um, but I just started this past August. Uh, and the M H C C B is uh, five oh one C three. Uh, we're nonprofit, but we also um, are a coalition, so that includes uh, project homes. Uh, Virginia Habitat, uh, V P L C, including a bunch of other.
Which is Virginia Poverty Law Center, by the way.
Yes, yes, the, sorry, there's a, a lot of, a lot of acronyms I have to work with on a daily basis, but. Um, our mission statement is basically to support communities of low-income families. Living in manufactured home parks, uh, by working to ensure access to legal, financial. And material resources and also uh, uh. Promote a favorable policy environment. So like Lee was saying, our organization's sort of origin story goes back to. The aggressive and unjust code enforcements in twenty fifteen of uh, Rudd's trailer park. Um, so, uh, as the residents uh, were faced with this mass sort of displacement and stuff. Cause, caused by the uh, code enforcement campaign uh, by the city. Individuals uh, and advocate groups came together to sort of fight back against this sort of like. Uh, action being taken by the city and there's a fair housing suit which was filed. Um, and so after sort of like the whole resident, or Rudd's uh, sort of incident. The coalition didn't disband, um, instead the incident really highlighted the need for systemic action. Uh, to be taken to preserve and improve the lives of Virginians living in these communities. But also, like we said, a lot of people just weren't aware, especially in the advocate side of things, a lot of people weren't aware and they were taken by the. Through the, the general stigma that we have, uh, like surrounding these uh, types of housing and stuff, so, um. A little while later, in uh, twenty seventeen, uh, we obtained our uh, five oh one C three status. And uh, the coalition's main activities uh, include hosting uh, symposiums for advocates. We did one, I think our most recent one was in uh, twenty twenty, so before my time there. Uh, but uh, we do symposiums for advocates and professionals in the industry and other stakeholders and residents. Uh, so we can discuss uh, sort of the issues uh, and stuff facing these uh, types of uh, communities. Uh, additionally, we've been conducting studies of the conditions of Virginia's uh, mobile home communities. So our biggest one was done in twenty sixteen, actually before the, we were officially formed. But um, I have a physical copy of it here and you guys can check it out on our website, but. Uh, we did a pretty comprehensive study of the conditions, which uh, central Virginians living in uh, these types of housing. Uh, are facing, um, and so that's a very uh, key sort of uh. Finding which we often go back to and um. Uh, really use as a centerpiece of our sort of like advocacy work and trying to inform people about this type of housing. Um, and we use, uh, we also uh, help housing advocates uh, to respond. Do park closures, um, and negligent management. Um, we were a little bit involved with um, uh. Uh, Project Homes in Bermuda, I believe, right? This was again before my time, yeah, so we were a little bit involved in that. Um, and most recently, uh, I've actually begun. Uh, when I started in the fall, I, I um. I was brought on to basically start a resident oral history project, uh, which we're just firing up now. Um, and so some of the, kind of to speak to some of the key information that we try to communicate and going back to sort of some of these structural issues. That Lee was alluding to and that we've been discussing a little bit. Uh, manufactured homes uh, are the largest source of unsubsidized affordable housing in the U S. Which is something that's not very well-known, um. Uh, but they're cheaper to produce typically and they're typically sold at uh, or rented at lower. Uh, prices than site-built homes, which is what you think of as like a typical home. Um, and this really makes them a prime uh, housing stock for people with low or fixed incomes. Um, so that's sort of like a dynamic which isn't really well-understood or very publicized and stuff. So that's one thing that we're trying to communicate, um. And also sort of inject into like the minds of people working in affordable housing, like a lot of people pass up. Uh, or don't think of uh, manufactured homes as this uh, valuable source. Of affordable housing, but it's, it's there and it's been there since the nineteen fifties, um, when these units were first designed. Um, uh, but in addition to these being like a prime uh, affordable housing stock. Uh, they've also been noticed and I think we were talking, I think Kim, you were alluding to this, uh, they've been noticed by private equity. Uh, and manufactured home communities are in high demand and they're actually like the. Op, like, the top uh, asset that large real estate groups want to buy up. Uh, and this is because uh, they can generate huge revenue rates, uh, huge cash flows from these uh, communities. Uh, and they have to put in the lowest minimum amount of maintenance and like. Uh, effort sort of into these communities and often what happens, as you can probably guess. Is as more and more of these large uh, private equity firms, uh, they're called real estate investment trusts, um, actually. Uh, but as these large groups buy up these communities, um, they're raising rents, they're adding uh. Fees, um, all sorts of things which are pushing people out of their homes. Um, and sometimes they'll just like keep. Like trying to rent and keep trying to extract as much as they can and just turn different residents out of these units. Or sometimes they just try to basically push everyone out of the, the community with higher rent rates. And then they'll go ahead and uh, buy or basically sell off the land. And Walmart will come in and build a, a store there or something like that. Um, so yeah, that's a, a very um, troubling dynamic, we're trying to. Again, try and make people more aware of that, but it also sort of uh, alludes to the problems that. Organizations like Private Homes has, or Private Homes, sorry, Project Homes. Um, when they're trying to buy a, a community that's potentially uh, going to be uh, sold to. Uh, a private equity firm, um, it can be hard to compete with um, with these firms who can throw up millions and millions and millions of dollars. And then you have a nonprofit that has to go and find uh, like grants and funding from multiple different sources. Um, it's almost impossible for residents to band together, um, and purchase their own uh, communities for sale. Um. And there's actually, um. There's actually uh, different states in the country which do. Uh, or which allow uh, right of first refusal, which is something that we, which is a. A specific policy point uh, that we do wanna push in the future. But right of first refusal basically means the community members get the first chance to put up an offer if their park is going to be sold. Um, so having that, a law like a right of first refusal in place would allow uh, organizations like ours or Project Homes. Uh, to potentially intervene when these communities are uh, up for grabs and stuff, um. Uh, yeah, so in addition to all that, uh, and then going back to sort of the stigmatism, um. The American public for a long time has uh, just sort of like a deep-rooted stigma uh, of these types of homes, uh. It's sort of based in like anecdotes, um, in addition to just sort of like. Uh, pop culture, which for a long time has characterized people living in these homes as um, like trash or trailer trash or stuff like that. Um, these communities are uh, more often than not, they're vibrant cohesive communities with issues like all. Any community, um, but often these issues are coming from uh, things out of their control, structural. Um, issues, uh, like I said, like, um, if they bought, if they were recently bought by a large uh. Uh, private equity firm, uh, often people are being exploited, uh, especially. Uh, uh, our um, our neighbors who uh, are uh. Non-English speaking, uh, quite often they're uh, manipulated or um, abused in some way by uh. Landlords or management companies, um. But uh, in addition to having this sort of stigma, trying to uh, push back ag- against it. Um, we wanna really show that uh, mobile homes or manufactured homes. Uh, provide a, a path to homeownership, which has increasingly become inaccessible for uh, Americans. Like we're about to enter into another recession right now, rent is at crazy, crazy levels. Um, it hasn't been this way in a, a long time, um, and Virginians are actually extremely. Um, I think about twenty-nine percent of Virginians are uh, uh, housing cost burden, which means they spend. I think more than thirty percent, is that right? Thirty percent of their, yeah, thirty percent of their income on housing. Um, when you look at uh, uh, manufactured homes, uh, it's even, it's even higher, it's um. Specifically because this uh, sort of this population that, um. Like I said before, most of them are low-income or they're living on fixed incomes. Um, or like I'm saying, uh, they might be uh, immigrants or something like that, so uh, money is extremely tight for them. Um, so again. Mobile homes offer a path to homeownership, but uh, it's not totally uh, accessible, even. Even if we have this uh, stock uh, available, um, due to all these structural factors and stuff. So, um, kind of speaking to addressing stigma. Uh, I may give a quick description of our, our newest project we're, we're taking up here, which is the oral uh. The Oral History Project, the official title of it is Manufactured Home Community Resident Oral History Project, sorry. Lot of, lot of words again, um. But the goal of the Oral History Project is sort of threefold, firstly, we're trying to expand uh, public awareness and sort of knowledge to. Fight the stigma sort of surrounding this type of housing, uh, secondly, we're gonna use the project. Uh, as a way to educate politicians and officials about issues that residents are facing, so. Uh, in the later spring and potentially over the summer, we're gonna actually be taking sort of clips from these oral histories that we've recorded. And use it as sort of talking points and forums with uh, politicians and officials and other advocates and stuff. Um, and finally, and most importantly to the project. Uh, we're empowering residents to tell their experiences living in Virginian. Uh, mobile home communities and providing them uh, the opportunity to participate in policy creation. Sort of through this project by uh, voicing their needs in their communities as well as sort of like. Um, I'm, I've been directly asking them, uh, what are like. Changes in your local government or what are policies that you would like to see that could affect you uh, in your community and stuff like that, so. Through doing that, we're hoping to include them more so in the policy uh, process. Um, and so far, this project has been conducted uh, by me with the help of uh, Jonathan uh, Knopf. Uh, Christie Mara, uh, Joe Sizik and Gladys Garcia, um. Christie, Joe and Gladys, they're all uh, people who do work for, or formerly worked for uh, the Virginian Poverty Law Center. And Jonathan works with me uh, at Housing uh, Development Advisors, um. But so far I've been to uh, Shady Hill Mobile Home Community, which is located in uh, North Chesterfield. Um, actually just up Route One from um, from Bermuda Estates, I think about half mile to a mile away essentially. Um, and actually funny thing about Route One, um. Most of the uh, there's a, a very high concentration, I don't wanna say most, but there's a very high concentration of. Uh, mobile home communities which just exist along that uh, strip of highway there, um. There are various like historical reasons for that, but it also uh, has to do with um, the zoning uh, in this area. Uh, oftentimes, uh, mobile home communities are, I can't speak to Chesterfield, um, I don't know it off the top of my head, but oftentimes mobile home. Communities are uh, zoned uh, to be placed in industrial areas. Um, or areas which have higher um, environmental uh, externalities, I guess, is the way to put it, um, so. Uh, Shady Hills, uh. Uh, Bermuda Estates, um, they're all located extremely close to uh, large industrial centers like um. Along the James and uh, additionally of some other uh, large uh, companies uh, along the uh, Route One, but um. Yeah, that's about, that's about all I had, but if you guys have specific questions about like. Yeah, that's about, that's about all I had, but if you guys have specific questions about like, uh.
Well, yeah, um, Noah, thank you. That was really interesting, especially the part about your oral history part, project. I think it also puts a face on an issue, which is, you know, really what we need to do is, is tell stories. Um, can you give us or write in the chat your, um, your, uh, uh. Link to your internet, to your, I mean, your website?
I think we, we did that already.
Oh, he did? Oh, okay, okay, good, good.
We put up the, um, that's the link to our website, but I'm gonna also put up the link to our YouTube channel. Um, eventually, the oral histories are gonna be on both the YouTube channel and our website. Um, I'm, I'm rearranging the website right now, uh, putting all that stuff up, so right now they're only on our YouTube. But I'll put the link up in a second. Um, Carol?
I was just wondering if you had talked with, um, Virginia Public Media about using your oral histories. In any of their little points of view or, you know, short, short documentary type programs?
So I, so this is, so this is my first time, um, like fully producing like a project like this. Um, uh, and so I've been sort of slowly making sort of. Like, uh, trying to figure out all sort of aspects of this and sort of like marketing. And sort of getting involvement like that, that is something that I've recently sort of realized, oh crap, I, I don't have exactly a plan for this. So Virginia Public Media, that's a good, um, that's a good suggestion and I'm going to listen to talking with them in the future.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think would be really, really a good, a good, um, team together. You know, it would, it would help our community get information that we need and it would get your information out to the community.
Right.
And they may even give you some volunteers and.
Exactly, that's, that's right.
They are well resourced.
Yeah, a- any questions from, uh, Evelyn, Sarah, Marilyn, I don't know if you guys, you know, have any questions either for Noah or?
I'm concerned about, you know, the predatory, uh.
Yeah.
Set, or, you know, building like crazy everywhere and, you know, snapping up the land and, you know, what? I mean, I, the, the right of first refusal sounds like a, you know, a lovely idea, of course.
Yeah, yeah.
But there are strategies about, um, yeah, you know, do we work around zoning if it's already. Housing for low income, that, that a locality should, uh, attempt to replace like with like. Or, you know, I don't, I don't know what's done nationally.
Yeah, so there are, um, sort of regulations which are trying to address that. Um. And we are also sort of like, these are, like you said, they. That specific sort of policy point is something that we're also trying to, uh, push for and stuff. Um, I don't think it's like specifically articulated in Virginia law, um, like. But, um, one of the things we're definitely aiming for is zoning, uh, reform, because like I said. Uh, a lot of times people are zoned into, and zoning is actually a local matter, if I, I found that not mistaken.
Yeah, yeah.
So some, some communities or some counties will not have like this industrial zoning for, uh, manufactured. Home communities, but I think one of our big goals is basically to have some statewide, uh, zoning reform. So there can be a little bit more consistency across board and favorable zoning conditions for these types of communities. Um, specifically, we also want to get, um, zoning that preserves. This type of housing, um, because like I said, there's a, a tendency for them to be bought by the big companies and then. Redeveloped, one thing we wanna do is protect them, develop, um, Evelyn?
Yeah, I just had a quick question. It sounds like this Rudd, uh, park was really in terrible shape. But I wondered about some of the others, I mean, just in general, if you can generalize. How, how good or how bad are, are some of our other ones in the area?
Yeah, so.
Is that study on the, is that study that you did, that's on your website?
That is also on our website. If I can actually, I'll, I'll send all these links and I can get a more specific one that takes you guys to the study.
You can send it to me, Noah, and I'll get it to everybody.
Perfect. Um, the study is very, very good, by the way. Um, it's got lots of, uh, lots of graphics. Uh, very, very in-depth and stuff. I think you guys would learn a lot from it. It's very good.
Yeah.
Um, but generally to speak, uh, speak to the, the general communities. I've, uh, I haven't been to like nearly, I've not nearly been to all the parks across the state. I've only been to like a handful of them around in the Richmond area, um, and generally, um. Generally, I'd say that the conditions in the parks are, uh, pretty nice, um, they're pretty good, uh. But it can, it, in, in individual park, there's a lot of things that will affect. Um, like the quality of, uh, the park. Uh, if you have like a larger park, there's one of the largest parks on the. Coast called Greenlee, um, which is also on Route One, um, and it is. Um, it's a, it's a pretty nice, uh, community. Um, it's almost like a suburban community, essentially. But this, it's owned by a, a very large, well, not a very, I don't know how large their company is, but it's a, a large community. Which can pull from a lot of, um, uh, different residents, uh, rent and lot rents and stuff. Uh, in order to provide, um. Uh, public goods, like, uh, they have like a soccer field, they have like a, a public. Um, I'm pretty sure they have like a community, um, building that people can go to as well. Um, so it, it depends, uh. And it also depends on the management, so like the management, they've been listening and, and at Greenlee, they've provided some of these things. Um, but other places like, uh, Shady Hill, which I've been to, uh, recently and which was bought by, uh. Uh, one of these, uh, equity firms, uh, recently, they are, um. The, the conditions, it's, it's more of a complicated situation. Um, like some things are, are getting better, some things are getting like cleaned in the park. Some people, uh, have, uh. Had some repairs made at Shady Hill, but in, for the large part. The residents have been hit with a string of new rules and increased rent and, and, uh, utility costs and stuff like that, so. A lot of times, whatever good a management company brings in or whatever good that is in a park is often. Sort of negated by, um, things that are out of their control or, um, yeah, some of these other things. Um, so it varies, varies.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I, I.
So we're, we're at, go ahead.
I deliver for Meals on Wheels and I end up with, um, delivering to a number of, of people in, in the, the mobile home parks. And some of them are, are, you know, very, very decent and, and, you know, and then others, I mean, I, I. Fear for my car because of the ruts and the, uh, and, and I fear for my, my, my footing. Because it's difficult to, to, you know, manage the stair or the pathway or whatever to get the meal delivered, so.
That's a testament to.
We are a little bit past our time, um, it's after one and we're generally good about sticking to this. One hour, so I want to thank, um, Lee and, uh, Noah. For their absolutely wonderful information, really, really appreciate it. Um, and I will be sending you a little gift from the league, small gift. Um, so I.
Thanks, everyone.
I really do appreciate it and, and I, I really so appreciate to. Not only your presentation and you're giving your time, but what you're doing.
Exactly.
Because it's so important in the community, it's, you're working on air issues that are, um, you know. Kind of under the radar and. But offer such, um, important, you know, housing options for people and it's really important work you're doing, so. And very worthwhile, so thank you for doing that.
Yeah, for sure.
So, so, um, uh, send out information to folks. Um, and I'll send the notes once I get, you know, the recording and get it done. And have it available hopefully on our website too, so, um, people can hear the good works that you guys are doing. So, um, thank you very much. And if you think of anything you really wanna share, just send it to me and I'll send it to our whole group. We have. You know, about a dozen people on the committee, even though we only, well, we had like six of us here, so that's pretty good.
Yeah, good, thank you.
Alright, see you, bye everyone. Thank you guys for having me.
Great.